The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. Have you all had a chance to read and review the August 3 meeting notes that Jim supplied?
Yes.
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to accept?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you've all had the July 20 minutes. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I think we're ready for our first public hearing. Eddie Giuliano, 303 Route 308, minor subdivision, lot line adjustment.
We're not at 6:35, are we?
On someone's clock we are.
We'll get Mr. Giuliano on.
Unmute. All right, can you see and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening to the board and any members of the public that's out there. So, I'm going to present my very, very simple plan this evening, so you'll all be happy to know that it'll only take me a few minutes to do this. So, I live at 303 Route 308 where I have two adjacent lots. I have one lot which is three acres, and on that lot is my primary residence, my house. Adjacent to that lot, we have a 61-acre lot. So, the plan is simply to move the lot line. So, on the 61-acre lot, my barn is located. So, I have the house on the three-acre lot and the barn on the 61-acre lot. So, what I want to do is move the lot line to the other side of the barn, which would create a 12-acre lot, which would then contain the house and the barn, and then I would have the 51 remaining acres on the other lot. So, that's the plan. I guess the only thing that I would say about that is, you know, this is five-acre zoning, so that would actually bring the three-acre lot into conformity with that five-acre zoning. And I'm not sure there's much more that I can say about that.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Melody and I, we did the site visit. Melody, would you like to report on what we saw?
Well, there isn't anything to say. This is a very simple and a very smart and logical move. The barn is really not that far from the house, and for it to be on a separate parcel doesn't make any sense whatsoever. You know, getting more acreage from the three-acre up makes all the sense. It's beautiful property. It makes both of them much more attractive as parcels, and I didn't see any issues at all. It just is, you know, a really smart and intelligent thing to be doing.
Okay, and I agree with Melody. I think it's a good rational decision. I don't see any issues here. Is there a representative from the CAB? Do they have a report?
There's someone. If you could just type into the chat, let me know.
Jim, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I reviewed it, and I don't have any planning issues. I think it makes sense. The one issue, some of the setback distances, they're grandfathered anyway, but it's all existing on-site, so no issues there. So, I'm on the inside.
Well, let me open it to the public. If any member of the public has anything they'd like to say?
If you do, please type in. Let me know, and I will open up your mic.
By the rousing silence, I assume there's no public comment?
I have not received anything, Michael. Nope.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application for Edward Giuliano for lot line adjustment under Town Code Chapter 101 within the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We reaffirm its prior classification as Type 2 under seaker, so which corbed environment card review is precluded. Based upon the view of submitted information, including portion planning board members, CAB, WAC members on their site visit to the project property, we find the proposed work is consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 101 subdivision of land. With respect to the minor lot subdivision, we find that the proposed action is consistent with Town Code Chapter 101, and we approve the application inclusive of the minor subdivision plan sheet prepared by Robert Campbell dated December 23, 2019. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions and/or requirements of the 180 calendar days of this resolution being adopted. Stamping and signing of the subdivision final plan is non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Duchess County Department of Health. Submission of the above cited survey map and the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 101 is said to be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, and including thereon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. Submission of deeds to be filed with the Duchess County Clerks Office and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck related to the review and processing of this application. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
I'll poll the board. Melody?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Edna? Edna? Is Edna muted?
She's not on.
She's on video, but I don't see she's muted, but...
Edna, can you hear us?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye. So, we have four ayes and one missing, and two, and one absent, and one open seat. Shall we proceed? In other words, the subdivision has been approved for the sake of the applicant.
No, I can't hear you. No.
I just texted Edna. Edna, we can... Trying to work out some technical difficulties with Edna.
Maybe it's the same problem I have, because I can hear you guys, but only on the phone. I can't hear you on the computer this time.
Well, if Mr. Giuliano can hear us, you have an approval, Mr. Giuliano.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
All right, good luck.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Jimmy, want to take a moment to see if we can get Edna online, or...
Yep, I'll see what I can do. I'm only doing it after group chat.
Extension up here. If you bring the extension with it, it reaches back to that... Get some air moving.
I think Edna maybe just logged off, and she's going to try back again, Michael.
Okay. So, I guess we'll just wait for a minute?
I think you have a second.
Well, we have a pause in the action. I sent you all the revised application by Brookmead that they'd sent to the ZBA for their sign, just so you all could take a look at it. John Lyons has asked me to give him a call to try to explain the planning board's position and why we recommended that they try to bring the sign into conformance, and we recommend it because that's what the law has directed that we try to do when we have applications like that. So, I'll try to get ahold of John and Kimberly tomorrow and pass that with the rationale for the planning board offering that recommendation.
All right, Michael, I'm not seeing Edna. Edna is trying to log back in.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right.
Okay, our next public hearing is Barry Entner, 41 Violet Hill Road, site plan, special use permit, wetland permit, construction of garage, septic fill pad, detached accessory dwelling, swimming pool, and septic system. Do we have the applicant or the applicant's representatives available?
I'm here, Michael. It's Darren from The Art of Building.
Okay. Will anyone be joining you?
Just me, I believe.
All righty then. Well, we can get started if you would like to sort of just give a brief overview of what it is that you're proposing to do, or your client is proposing to do.
Certainly. Jim, I think, yeah, that sheet's probably the better one to look at there.
I'll zoom in.
Okay. There's actually, the more recent email that I had sent Gretchen has the same plan, but with numbers on it. It might just be easier for Zoom presentation. I don't know if you have that or not. It wouldn't be part of this whole package. It was sent in like two or three weeks ago just to make things easier. If not, I can work off this.
You know what it was called? I'm just looking.
I think Jordan just called it Site Plan again. It was with the grading plan that was submitted.
This is the most recent date one that I have.
Okay, we can work off of this. That's actually probably even better, that sheet there. All right, I'll just, the buildings were numbered in the thing, just because it's sometimes it's hard to point on Zoom. But just by way of introduction, so we have 41 Violet Hill Road, not too far off of the intersection of Burger Road is where this parcel's located on the opposite side of the street. It's an 18-acre parcel, and on the parcel today, there are currently two structures. If you look at the screen there, as you work up the driveway from Violet Hill Road, the first building you'd come to on your left with the red roof there, that is the main house. That's 3,348 square feet in size. And then if you continue all the way down the driveway, just for the moment ignoring everything else there, the building you come to at the very end of what looks like a cul-de-sac is an existing barn. It's actually an art studio for the owner, and that's 1,550 square feet in size. So, those are the existing structures that we have on the parcel. There was formerly a shed when I first put this application through, but the shed hasn't made it. The intent was to relocate it, but the shed had a lot of roots growing through it and not much of a foundation, so it's basically just ended up in the dumpster. So, we're going to ignore the fact that there was a shed ever there. And then there are several new buildings proposed for the site. If we go around the cul-de-sac, if you will, and back out towards Violet Hill Road, the building that we would pass on our right-hand side, call that as the proposed 25 by 44 three-car garage, is a proposed new addition to the parcel, 1,100 square feet in size, a three-car garage for the owners to park their vehicles in. And then if you continue out the driveway just a little bit further, you come to a little bump, which is intended to be a parking area. And what you see just down the hill from that, although it's hard to tell it's down the hill, is a proposed detached accessory dwelling. And it's going to do a dual purpose of detached accessory dwelling and pool house. As you can see, it's approximate to a proposed 18 by 36-foot swimming pool. You think you found a different one, Jim? Or is that the same?
Just the right, just the one you were looking for?
That's the grading plan.
Okay, I'll go back to the other one, sorry.
It's fine, we can use the one. Yeah, might as well just stay there, or wherever that one is. So, there's an arrow actually pointing to it, but proposed two-story, one-bedroom pool house slash detached accessory dwelling, because it has sleeping quarters in it and a full kitchen. And then just behind it is a proposed 18 by 36-foot swimming pool. You can see a pool deck drawn in there, and then there is a proposed pergola, a wooden pergola, just basically a roof on legs, proposed at the shallow end of the pool as well. And then if we were to sort of continue from pergola through pool and out into the field, that is the location of a proposed one-bedroom septic system, a fill system to accommodate the bedroom in just the pool house here. The intent is to serve this completely with its own wastewater treatment and to put a new septic system there in the field. Another highlight of this plan is that what we're dealing with here lives pretty much entirely in the wetland buffer when it comes to the pool and the pool house. You can see the dotted line on this plan. I think it's called out with an arrow as well, just to make it easy to follow. But that is the 100-foot Town of Rhinebeck wetland buffer that's shown as it runs, essentially skips the area where the septic's proposed, and it runs and includes the pool, the pool house, and a lot of the existing studio building as well. Yeah, that's it right there. All right. And so that would be the extent of the new development proposed, and just some general highlights in terms of talking about reasons for where things are located and reasons for trying for a wetland permit in this case. Basically, this development is all, as you can see, pushed away from the main house, very much intentionally for a couple of reasons. One is, we're dealing with a historic house here. We wanted to keep the development of other buildings away from the house to allow the house to have its own space on the property. Also, what you don't necessarily appreciate from this plan is that there are some very large trees that line the driveway, and some more to be added in the next few weeks when the weather gets a little damper. And all of this development, again, is pushed behind that existing tree line, so the effect when you come into the property is that you actually would come upon these buildings only after you've appreciated the main house. And another reason for this is also the fact that the studio building in the back there is basically a working business. So, the reason we've pushed the pool and the pool house down the hill here, and again towards the wetland buffer into the wetland buffer, is also to create a little bit of privacy for that use, so that it can exist, you know, a little bit outside the public eye, delivery drivers, clients that come in to visit the barn in the back. And then in the wintertime, you know, the pool is sort of the furthest point away from the public areas of the property, so that when the winter covers on, it's not something you'd be staring at in the snowier, colder months when you're not looking at a beautiful And I think that's pretty much all of the highlights in terms of, you know, I know one of the requirements for a wetland permit is to evaluate other locations where we might put these things, and this was discussed at some great length during the planning board site visits. And beyond what I just said, the other reason that we've chosen to locate the development here is also the fact that there are quite a bit of underground utilities just behind the main house, so what looks like a viable upland alternative is actually a very difficult place to put the pool and the pool house. So, again, we were sort of pushed back toward the wetland buffer as a proposed location for that. I can elaborate if there's, you know, any more questions.
Can you locate those underground utilities for us?
Sure, I can draw them on a map. What I can tell you exists there is, for starters, if you see the bubble that calls out the existing septic system just to the left of the house on the screen there. Okay, so that bubble shows you the existing septic system. A little bit behind it along the tree line is, there's actually a generator there, two propane tanks, and where the electric service comes into the property. So, those propane tanks and that generator then feed sort of at an angle across to the main house. As you can see, there's an existing well line there, sort of in the middle of that lawn area, just parallel to the driveway, which feeds back into the main house. And then not shown is the water line feeding out of the house, which then goes all the way back to the studio in the rear, along with some electric and underground cables for data and things like that, as well as another gas line out in that direction towards the studio. So, it's a bit of spaghetti for all those utilities. And then there are some utilities that go to the garage site, the proposed garage site as well, and more that will be needed. So, you add to that soup a little bit more, and you have some utility already to that location because of the shed that was formerly there. And that would be the jumping off point where utilities would then head across the driveway to the proposed detached accessory dwelling. That's also, by the way, a very visible portion of the site in the wintertime. So, one of the ideas was to not put too much development there either because of, you know, what essentially is a site that you can look up the hill and see during the wintertime.
I see. But you don't believe there's any problem putting the three-car garage there, in that area with all those underground utilities and other utilities of that sort?
Michael, I can't understand you.
The question I was asking is, the garage is being proposed to be built, you know, up in that area, which is apparently also full of underground utilities, and that's why it'd be very nice to be able to see where they are, especially since you're proposing to build a garage in that area.
Yeah, the garage is on the site of the former shed, so, you know, the utilities aren't in that footprint. They run a good 10 feet behind that garage out towards the studio there. But certainly, we can locate them on the plan with a reasonable degree of accuracy. I mean, we'd have to dig them up. A lot of them were put in a while back.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful if that's one of the reasons, the rationale for the way you're putting the pool, where you're putting it. I think we really need to see that so that we can see exactly what you're talking about.
Sure.
Who did the site visit for this one? Edna and...
Me. Kathy.
Edna, I read your report. If you'd like to share your report?
Yeah, I'll read some of it. As we've already been talking about the proposed location of the pool and the pool house, we consider that to be the primary area for discussion here. The location of the proposed garage is outside the wetland boundary, as is the septic field. I took a look at the Duchess County Parcel Access Map, the wetland area of it, excuse me, and you can see that the wetland on this property is part of a very large system to the north and the east. The house, that existing artist's studio and the proposed garage are located on a kind of a long rise that extends from the driveway entry all the way to the studio. The land falls off to the east and the west of this rise. It sinks lower to the east before rising again to a very steep slope. While we were there, the owner mentioned that water can rise quickly and high in the wetland during heavy rainstorms, rising close to the level of the dumpster that's located to the east of the studio. If you look at the topo map that was submitted with the application, it suggests that flooding could occur at the proposed site for the pool, resulting in potential chlorine contamination of the wetland, and groundwater at this site is also likely to be high.
Edna, can I clarify one point there for the owner's comment about where the water rises to?
Uh huh.
Sorry to interrupt you. He wasn't speaking about the elevation of the water rising to the elevation of the dumpster on the topographic map. His point was that he's only witnessed surface water as far forward as that point on the map, which is quite a bit different. He's not suggesting that the elevation of the water rises, you know, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12 feet to that elevation. He was simply saying that he's noticed standing water, if you were to sort of, the water were to creep from the rear of the property towards the front at the line of the dumpster.
Right. Surface water.
Surface water, but at the lowest point of the elevation here, so at the lowest contour of the elevation, not 10 feet depth.
Uh huh. No, I was not suggesting it would be...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I could have heard it two different ways.
Right. But as you can see how water flows from the topo map, it looks like it would flow south out of the wetland. And you also have that very steep slope to the east, which is also carrying water down to the wetland. In any case, I think it's a concern. We did ask whether another location had been considered for the pool and the pool house, and it was mentioned that the proposed site is preferred to keep the pool somewhat away from traffic to and from the studio on the driveway. But if you take a look at the proposed location of the pool, it's lower than the driveway, and so it appears that even with solid fencing, it would not provide the desired privacy. We need to mention, as we're aware from discussions with previous application, that Rhinebeck's Wetlands Law states, quote, "Avoidance of impacts to regulated areas by keeping regulated acts outside regulated areas shall be considered the highest priority. Regulated acts that can be located outside regulated areas shall be so cited." It seemed to me that an alternative site for the pool and pool house does exist outside the wetland boundary. They could be cited perhaps north of the existing well on that long rise that goes from the house to the studio. Either the pool and the pool house could be on the same level, or the pool could be to the west and lower than the pool house and screened from the drive. Just one other thought, as we were talking about this, is the applicant could consider integrating the garage and pool house into one larger structure that might be reminiscent of the large barn that once stood on the property. So, I mean, that's just one possibility. There are other areas outside the wetland boundary where the pool and pool house could be located.
I think the mission is to be very helpful to have that information mapping the underground utilities between the house and the studio, and also, once our engineer has been able to complete his review of the information we sent him, the topography and whatnot, I've also sent in Edna's report, because I think that that has some information that I think he would appreciate having, to give us a better idea of alternative sites and potential problems with the existing site, given what the owner has said about surface water standing in certain areas. We're likely to get a pretty good idea tomorrow of where surface water is going to be standing after a large rainfall. But once we have this information together, we should be able to make a more educated assessment of exactly what potential problems there are, the ability to move the pool and pool house out of the wetland buffer, and at the same time, still fulfill the applicant's desire for these different facilities on their property. Kathy, did you have anything you wish to... Kathy, did you have anything you wish to add?
No, she was very thorough.
She was indeed. Any other questions or comments from members of the planning board?
Michael, this is Jim. I have a comment or question for Darren. Darren, I took a look at the plans this time around. It didn't appear based on the application and the plans that are actually delineated by Wetland Delineator. That's a requirement of the Wetlands Code for Wetland Permit. Can you speak to that?
I can. I'd have to talk to Jordan, who's the civil engineer on the job. I don't know if they were actually delineated for this plan.
As long as the delineation has taken place within a year of the application being submitted, we can use it, but it has to be within 12 months. Outside that, then it has to be redelineated.
Lost video there.
You're kind of going around here.
Everybody back?
There you are. Okay, is there a representative of the C A B present to give a report? Hearing none. I will assume there is not. Was there any report, any concerns from Historic Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee?
No, no, there was not. We submitted a report that gave a brief outline of the history of the violets and the greenhouses on the property and says what is proposed in any configuration doesn't impact the historic house and doesn't appear to present any archaeological issues. We suggested that the board could move ahead.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, at this point, if there's anyone from the public who wish to offer any comments?
So please send me a chat in the chat box.
I guess nobody?
Not seeing anything, Michael, no.
Okay. Well, what we're going to do, because there's some information that we're still waiting for, is to continue this public hearing. Gretchen has said that we're available to continue it to September 8th at 6:45 PM. Could I hear a motion to do so?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. So hopefully, we'll hear from Ray in the interim. Darren will be able to give us that information about the underground utilities and also let us know whether or not a redelineation is required or if the one that we currently have was done within the last 12 months so that we can accept it for the wetland permit application. Is there anything else anyone has to say or would like to say tonight?
I mean, I'll just add that it sounds like it'd be useful if I submitted a more elaborate grading plan just on the heels of Edna's comments, just to show you where the poolhouse finished floor elevation is in relation to the wetlands because it's a few feet above the water line. So that, I think I can do a little bit better job of illustrating that in advance of the next meeting. And just so that the towns professionals have something a little more comprehensive to review because currently I think they have the septic plan and sort of a crude grading plan for the site. So I think that'll be helpful.
I think that'd be very helpful. Given some of the issues that were raised tonight, I think we're going to need very, very detailed, specific information to resolve any potential questions. And I think that would be very helpful. Well, in that case, we'll see you back on September 8th at 6:45 PM.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is Griffin Dunn, 16 Bullenbecker Road, site plan and special use permit to convert part of an existing barn from storage to a two-bedroom guest house. And who will be presenting for us? Anyone here for Mr. Dunn's project?
Sorry, I was muted. It's Michelle here with Chestnut Street Design. How's everyone?
Very good.
Sorry, I just said a bunch of stuff and no one heard it. We also have Lee Frizzell, the project architect, is on the line as well, and Bob James, project engineer, here.
Okay, can we get a nice sort of overview of exactly what's being proposed?
Sure. So a quick summary. We're seeking approvals for a special use permit and site plan review for the conversion of a portion of an existing barn that's currently used for storage to a two-bedroom accessory dwelling located on 71 Acre Parcel on 16 Bullenbecker Road. Yeah, Jim, if you want to scroll into that barn structure, perfect. So we're not proposing any modifications to the existing footprint. However, we are reworking the exterior shell so it aligns more closely with the historical Dutch barn's aesthetic. And I'm going to hand it off quickly to Bob James to just go over the site plan that we have for the proposed septic and well.
Okay, this is Bob James. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, so I prepared the site plan showing the existing contours, existing buildings, existing conditions. There is no real change to the site, no grading, except for installation of the force main, septic tank, pump station, force main, septic system, and a proposed drilled well. The sites for the well and the septic were chosen. The well was chosen because it's on a little bit of a high spot and a good spot adjacent to the proposed guest house. And it meets separation distances to septic systems and septic tanks and pump station. And the proposed septic system was chosen due to the goods, we had good soils in that location, and it was also met the 200-foot minimum separation from adjoining well and another well on site near the goat barn. Again, once again, the septic will have to be pumped to get to the location of the proposed field. I did, just one more item. We did make a change, a revision to the plans since this was last seen. One of the additions was the separations from the proposed well to the septics and tanks. And on sheet three, an addition of detail for the swimming pool fencing.
Okay. I think one of the questions that certainly has arisen since this project came before us was the nature of the fact that it is an old historic barn and exactly how it is being converted to an accessory dwelling unit at the same time, to the greatest extent practicable, preserving its characteristics as a historical Dutch barn. I know that that came up on the site visit. We have a report from the Historic Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee on this as well, about some of the concerns they have. Do we have any elevations of what the proposed alterations, exterior alterations will look like?
Yes, I believe, Jim, if you, I sent the revisions to Gretchen earlier. There's a newer set of plans with horizontal lap siding. It was sent in probably two or three weeks ago. So yes, just to answer the historical part, we did receive Bob Hedges' report on Friday, this past Friday, and do plan to extrapolate a few of the exterior details that he mentioned in his report and provide further details on how we're going to align with the Dutch barns of that time. He referenced the Palatine Farmstead, which was one of our case studies that we were able to look into and are going to derive some details from to replicate and kind of bring this barn back to its former life.
Okay, so we see a west elevation and north elevation. Do we have an east elevation?
Well, this is the previous set. There's a newer set with revised elevations that kind of depict what I just explained. Any luck with that, Jim, or?
I'm searching for it. Let me see.
Okay, sure.
Maybe I could just jump in and try and get some clarification on something.
Sure.
If I'm correct, in sort of the progress of what's been going on here, changes have already been made to the barn. I believe they were done prior to your becoming involved with the project.
Correct, yes.
And that includes the windows we're seeing on the gable end of what we're looking at right now, as well as roofing. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And windows around the back.
Correct, yep.
Now, in correspondence, in trying to do a little bit about what was here historically, we were told that there were no windows in those elevations of the barn. Is that correct?
Yes, from what Griffin Dunn had told me, that those windows on the back elevation and that gable end were not there prior.
So at some point, without permits, these changes occurred to this barn. And what you're bringing before us is sort of a, to some extent, a change in what was already done prior, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so to some extent, we're almost back to square one, looking at where we're going to go with this barn. To some extent, we hope we're also remediating some of the appropriate changes that have already been made. That's my statement. You don't have to agree or disagree, but that's how I'm seeing us moving forward with this project.
Yes, I agree.
And I know that you are proposing, which we can't look at right now, the elimination of the vertical board and baton siding that we're seeing and that has already been installed on the back, correct?
Correct, yes.
All of that is to be removed and replaced with a horizontal clabboard siding?
Yes.
Of wood, of hardy board, of what material?
Of wood. And based on Bob Hedges' report, we're going to be detailing out. It's going to be a lap siding with a varying exposure.
Oh, I see.
Yes, based on case studies.
Well, I think one of the things that we're very fortunate to have now is a recently constituted committee, which is the H A P A C committee. And many members of that committee were on the site visit that we made. So I would personally like, part of the purpose of that committee is to be advisory. But I would encourage to work with that committee to come up with a design that in the greatest degree possible respects the historic significant characteristics of this barn. It's probably fair to say that before it was altered, the permit is probably one of the finest barns you would find in this part of the country. And so it's really significant in the history of barn construction. The other thing that's important, I think, in going forward, if you look on what we're looking at here, the area directly in front of the pool, are two additionally attached smaller barn structures indicated in the site visit, the movement to do work in there in the future. And I would encourage you to be discussing that with the Historic Advisory Committee as well so we don't kind of get ahead of ourselves as we did here.
Sure.
I think what we're thinking here, the Historic Advisory Committee, is there, for one thing, is to work with people working with a property like this. There's no fee involved, anything like that. But there's a tremendous expertise amongst the members of that committee who I think would be extremely helpful in working with you to design something that will meet the needs of the property owner, but at the same time, to the greatest extent practicable, preserve the character of that barn, as Melody said. It is one of the last truly outstanding examples of this architecture, which used to be far more common in the area, but most of those have disappeared. It's similar to what our Conservation Advisory Board, it's another advisory group, and they're often working with landowners who have different problems with landscaping, repairing buffers, things like that. And once again, there's no fee involved, but they will sit down and work and help design different landscape plans to help those people. So I would strongly recommend, and I know the committee is more than happy to work with people, especially on projects like this that they value so highly, to basically preserve what can be preserved and at the same time make it functional for what the client wishes to have done. So I would strongly recommend you take them up on that.
And let me just add, this is Kathy Hammer. We met at the site. I'm with the committee, and we are more than eager to work with you, to support you, and in whatever ways helps make this a project that is as important as the barn is. So, you know, we'll be in touch with you or feel free to be in touch with us, Gretchen can do either. And we look forward to working with you as best as we can.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments from members of the planning board or questions from the applicant or the applicant's team?
Michael, this is Jim.
Yes?
I believe I found the file with the horizontal boards.
Yes, that is the correct file.
Okay. I know it's a little late. Thank you, Gretchen, for helping me find that. I don't know if you want to discuss this now or if we'll just kind of move on, but I did finally get them.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just showing the exterior. I think there is more to be done with the Historical Committee, so I will absolutely reach out to them. I've already reached out, actually, in the past week to kind of touch base with them, so I will continue the conversation.
Okay, well then, at this point, I'd like to reschedule the continuation of this public hearing for September 8th at 6:50 PM. Could I hear a motion to do so?
So moved, Melody. Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we'll see you all back on September 8th at 6:50. If you have other questions or anything, you know, please don't hesitate to get in touch with us.
Great, thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Our next public hearing is Gigi Midori at 3460 Route 9G, Site Plan Special Use Permit, Ground Mounted Solar System. Representative of the applicant, or the applicant here to present?
Leah Springsteen's here from Sun Common.
Excellent. If you can sort of let everyone know what you're going to do, what you want to do?
Yes, so we'll be installing one ground mount solar array consisting of 28 350-watt solar panels at 3460 Route 9G in the RC5 zoning district. We've met all property line setbacks and all wetland setback requirements as well. The electricity generated on site will be for residential use only and will not be distributed to other utility accounts.
Okay. I didn't ask who did the site visit. I did. We went out, we took a look, and where they're locating it, first of all, the whole property- We went out, we took a look, and where they're locating it, first of all, the whole property, the house and all is way back from 9G. You're not gonna see it from 9G. There's an adjoining neighbor. The panels are down a little slope of the hillside. There is a fairly thick shrub border along the property line, and if it ever needed to be significantly improved or even slightly, that would be no difficulty. So I don't believe we saw any problems. Edna was there with me, and don't see if anything she'd like to add?
Again, I'm having trouble understanding what you're saying, but in any case, I agree with everything you said. And the neighboring property, there is, there is no visible residence from the site of the solar panels. What there is, is a very large area of fenced pasture. So viewing this, I think, will be virtually impossible outside the property.
I agree, I agree. Is there a representative of the CAD? Cole was there with us. They've, I think they submitted a written report saying they saw no issues here, but I don't know if the representatives wanted to add anything? Hearing nothing, Jim? Anything you wanted to add?
Nope. The, just the visit, the panels was my only potential concern from the property, and it sounds like that's covered, so I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone here from the public?
So please shoot me a message in the chat box.
I guess not.
Michael, I think we're good.
Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
No move, Melody.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I have a resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application for the site plan and special permit use under Town Code Chapter 125, respectively for installation of a ground mounted solar array at 3460 Route 9G within the RC5 zoning district. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, for which coordinated quality review is precluded. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC and CAD members on their site visit to the project property, we find that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in Chapter Code 125, and we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code 125, and approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Jeff Irish, Sun Common, dated February 13th, 2020. And we authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the low conditions requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, and including thereon all required stamp seals and certifications. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursables due to the Town of Rhinebeck related to review and processing of this application, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed action. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move, Melody.
Second.
Thank you. I'll poll the board. Melody?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Elise?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you're good to go.
Thank you. Do you still need the three full-sized printed-out drawings?
For our use, for our file, we would just need one. And I assume, I'm assuming at this point, I believe that the building department will also need one for the building permit, and I mean-
We need at least two, Michael.
We need at least, at least two. A third is the, if your, if your client wants a stamped signed copy.
Okay, that's no problem. I will get that to your office on Wednesday, probably.
Very good. And I'll try to get those signed this week for you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's see, what do we have now? We have one more public hearing. Robert and Gloria Fox, 232 Morton Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, renovation addition of second story to an existing structure.
Hello?
Yes.
All right, so my name is Don Santiago. I'm here representing the San Dusharm Architecture for this project. Our design intent for this project is to renovate the existing one-story guest college, which is being used for storage, into a two-story studio and tractor barn. We're gonna keep the existing foundations and first floor exterior walls and add a second floor above the house for a new studio for the owner. And then the first floor will remain a tractor storage with a bathroom on the first floor that is existing. We're just renovating the existing fixtures.
And who did the site visit for this one?
Excuse me, sorry?
I'm asking the board members. I don't have a list here who did the site visit.
Oh, okay.
Well, Michael, I was there. I think I've served two functions and Sharon went as well.
Okay. Did you see any issues, or?
Neither one of us did, and neither did the Preservation Committee with regard to this particular building. Didn't seem as though it needed the attention of the historic preservation set of issues, so no.
Okay. Do we have a representative of the CAD here? I think they submitted a report, seeing no issues.
There was somebody there from the CAD.
Okay.
That I didn't see.
Jim, do you have anything you wish to add?
Nope, I think I'm all set.
I'll open this up to the public. Any public comment?
Yes, please.
I guess not. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
No move, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So did I have a, I have a resolution? The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access, as follows, on the application by Robert and Gloria Fox for site plan review and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, respectively, for renovation addition of its second story at 232 Morton Road within the HB20 Historic Preservation Zoning District. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC and CAD members and WAC members on their site visit to the project property, we find that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations in Chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth within Town Code Chapter 125, and we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, and approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans, KDA plus FD with the most recent revision date of July 10th, 2020. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of below conditions or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within the Town Code Chapter 125, except as be modified to a lesser extent, lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck related to review and processing of this application, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed action. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move, Melody.
Second, Kathy.
Very good. I will poll the board. Kathy?
Yes.
Melody?
Aye.
Elise?
Yes.
Edna?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Very good. Once you get the final plan, site plan, Jim, ready to go, for me to stamp and sign, you'll be able to get a building permit.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Michael, this is Jim. Sorry, Michael, this is Jim. I just want to add, we're just gonna put a reference in here to the ZBA approval in the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, we received ZBA approval last time. We're just getting the resolution in the next month's meeting.
Thank you, Jim. I forgot about that.
Oh, that's fine. I didn't want to interrupt you. Go ahead. Watch the text, so we'll put that reference.
And once I go off the rails, I never go back, so. All right, we have two new applications to consider tonight. Rhine Cliff Volunteer Fire Department at 17 Shastle Avenue. They wish to build a picnic shelter up at the land they have, where they often have public events and things like that down in Rhine Cliff. And who's here to represent the Volunteer Fire Department?
I am Joe Bear, representing Rhine Cliff Volunteer Fire Company.
Excellent. Just want to let us know what you, what you want to do, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, it's very simple. I mean, it's, it's basically a shelter. We do Chili Fest up there. We do different events up there in the course of the year. There's a picture of it. Well, you should have all gotten a picture of it. I think I made envelopes for everybody. I hope you all got an envelope.
I believe we did.
Okay, so there's no water, there's no electric. It's just a covering from rain and elements and sunshine. It's on the map. It's just beyond the parking area that is already there. It is only 10 foot longer than the tent that we put up every year for the Chili Fest. It covers two of the four lots that we own. It's situated on two of the four lots that the fire company owns up at Fireman's Field. And it's really, it's just a cement pad and a roof in the back. There's a small enclosure. One side has a, like a, kind of like a garage door. You can see it here in the west elevation. It's a rolling shutter, so that we could have put food out on that or across the counter. But there's no electric back there. There's no water back there. It's just so we can secure stuff back there. The other side, where you see that door on the backside of the building, the east elevation, there are double doors because we would like to store the lawnmower that we use to mow the field up there, so we don't have to drive it up from the firehouse every time we're looking to mow the lawn.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
Michael, this is Jim. I have two comments. So the first one is just related to the design. I don't have any issues with it. Just thought that whoever goes out to do the field view should just take a look at the design and kind of what's around it to see what you think. Based on my review of the aerial, there's really nothing around it. It's a pretty large space, and the other properties are significantly distance away. But the one I did want is actually the location of the proposed porta potty. Let me see if I can pull it up on the plans. So if you look at the plans here, the purple, on the top left corner, there's a proposed porta potty on a concrete slab kind of between the parking lot and the pavilion. And, you know, just in general, it's located, you know, kind of facing the road in Rhine Cliff. And I was just thinking that it would be nice if we could see if that might be able to be moved, so that it was, you know, closer to the pavilion. I know there might be some design issues or somehow partially enclosed, you know, and kind of not, not the porta potty attached, but some type of enclosure that would be attached to the, to the building. So the porta potty would kind of be inside it, kind of behind a fence or something like that. I think one, it would help shield it from view from the road, you know, and the neighbors. And the other, if it was behind some type of, you know, wooden fence or something like that, it would allow the ability for that to be locked, so that it wouldn't eventually try to be used off hours or something like that. Unless it's, you know, unless, you know, you're proposing for this just to be there when you're gonna have an event, and then it kind of goes away. So that was really my, my main question and thought, is just the location of the porta potty news.
Yeah, I think the, the reason it was situated there was twofold. One, so that it was easily accessible by wheelchair, so it wasn't, because it is a handicap porta potty. And B, so that it would be available close to the, off the road, so that a truck could get in there to take it away when we're not, you know, there are long, over the winter, for instance, we don't really use, we wouldn't be having much of anything up there. We would probably store the fireboat underneath the shelter just to keep the snow out of it. Right now, we pay for shelter in the winter for the, for the fireboat, so we would probably use it for that. But if you're, so your concern is that it's visible from the road? I mean, we wanted to keep it sort of away from the shelters, because it does have an odor to it that we were hoping wouldn't invade the shelter.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a consideration, but yeah, it just kind of popped out to me as, you know, it's, it's kind of, sitting out there is, is pretty visible. And obviously, you know, I was just thinking if we could somehow, you know, incorporate that into, you know, more of the structure that's being built and kind of, you know, obscure from view. That was cool.
Well, I would imagine we could come up with some sort of a facing or something at the end of the parking lot there to keep it visible, keep it invisible from the road, you know, that would hide it from the road. Something that would be simple enough to open up, to get the truck in there, to put it down and take it out.
Yeah, certainly that's a consideration, to be able to get to it. So, you know, landscaping is tough, because obviously you can't go through the bushes to get to it, so.
Right.
Yeah, it was just a consideration I wanted to put out there for thought.
Okay, well, I'll bring that up at the meeting and see what, what we can come up with.
Any other thoughts from anyone? Okay, I have a resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by the Rhine Cliff Fire Department for site plan approval and special permit use, respectively for construction of a picnic shelter at 17 Shastle Avenue within the RCH, Rhine Cliff Hamlet, RCL, Rhine Cliff Overlay Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board's advisors and public. We're classified as an actual type 2 under seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We are scheduling the public hearing for September 8th at 6:35. And directing the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. Who would like to go to Rhine Cliff to see this lovely site?
I'll go.
Elise?
Sure.
And I'll go. I could put Sharon's name down, but that wouldn't be fair. So, in accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comments concerning environmental factors. And in accordance with Town Code Chapter 118, Waterfront Consistency Review, refer the application to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and written comments concerning consistency with the LWRP. And we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both above cited field visit or referral appropriation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on September 8th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll be getting in touch with you to set up a site visit.
Terrific. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. We have Pink Rose Property LLC, 40 Morton Road, addition and main empty canopy, site plan and special use permit.
Mark is here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How's everyone?
Good.
Well, I'm good.
Good. Hungry.
We'll be quick. So this is a, well, it's being treated as a new application, but I think most of, I'm assuming most of the board members are familiar with this property. So it's, it's Pink Rose LLC, located on the west side of Morton Road. You know, parcel size is a little more than 16 acres. And so there was a previous application that was made for some, they were basically landscape improvements and some exterior changes, you know, associated to the west side of the residence. There was a reflecting pool and a patio that was, you know, considered and previously approved by the board and some, as I mentioned, landscaping changes on the west side. There was a pond enlargement that was part of the application, some patio and fire pit alongside the pool, a labyrinth located on the north side of the, of the property. And so at this time, the owner- And so at this time, the owner, Pink Rose, would like to make some changes to the front entry, and also on the north side of the existing structure. And if I recall, when I originally presented this project in a, I think there was discussion about changes to the front entry, and at the time of, that we went through with this application, you know, the owner decided not to, to, you know, continue with the changes to the front entry. So obviously, at this time, they'd like to do that. And then also, I mentioned that there's a, some structure changes on the north side of the existing building. So, Jim, if you could zoom in a little bit to the, I guess it was, it's about the, you know, like the northern portion of the building? And then I'll also refer to, I've also attached with the application, plans that were prepared by the project architect for both the entry and the addition on the north side of the structure. So, starting with the entry, there's just a, so there's a minor change to the driveway alignment, to the driveway alignment. I'll just discuss the site first, Jim, and then if I could switch to those.
Yeah, sorry, Mark.
Yeah, architectural details. So, just a, there's a small change to the, to the entry. As you enter into the property, heading east to west, there's kind of, there's a, an oval, you know, that allows you to come in and then head to the south and then exit. So there's going to be, and so what the owner, an applicant would like to do is just, you know, it's more of a, you know, an entrance, you know, more of a formal entrance, I guess I should say, into the, into the structure. And so, they want to be able to come in and it'll, you know, it's going to, the driveway's just going to extend a bit to the north, and then as, and then as you turn and head south, you know, it's a parallel entry into the, into the, you know, parallel path to the building, and then you can walk into the new, you know, the new canopy at the entrance. This, this minor revision to the driveway will require relocation of those existing propane tanks just on the north side. You can see that they extend just a little bit under the driveway, so there's 2,000-gallon propane tanks, they'll just have to be shifted to the north a little bit, just minor site change there. And then, and while we have the site drawing up, I'll just also, I'll switch to the, to the addition, that's the building addition on the north side of the building. That building addition is also going to require some changes. If, you'll see rectangles that are, there's a bracketed P and a bracketed E there, and those represent the existing septic tank, and then the location for the proposed septic tank. And so that new addition will require relocation of the existing tank, it just needs to be moved to the north in order to allow for adequate, a required separation from a foundation, you know, per Duchess County Health Department standards. No health department approval is required, it's just relocation of the tank and having them relocate it so that it meets the, meets health department requirements. There's also a, you see a small rectangle with a, with a darkened circle in the center, that's actually a siphon. That can remain in the same location, and then from there, the effluent from the septic tank is distributed into an absorption field to the west. So, the only thing that has to occur there is just a, just basically moving, moving the septic tank about 10 feet to the north. So, Jim, if you could then switch to the, well, and I should also say, you know, I'm just going to flip back to the entryway, there's also just, as you, as you, once you go past the new canopy and entrance into the residence, there'll just be some resetting of, there's now, it's cut curbing, I think it's got, cut bluestone curbing that outlines the perimeter of the driveway, that's just going to be reset in the, you know, throughout this section that we're talking about revising. So it's just a cleaner, cleaner curbing to the, to the new canopy, and also there's an existing port cochere that's there, and that will be, there'll be new curbing there, basically in the same location, just, you know, just refined with some, with some set tangents and curves, and that's it. So, Jim, if you could switch to the architectural plans, either one, whether it's the canopy or the, or the north addition. Okay, so we'll do north addition first. And so on this plan, you can, so there's an outline of the existing building, and so since we're looking at the north extension, if you look on the north end of that building, there's a hatched area. And that hatched area represents the change that's going to occur in the structure. And so now it's going to be, there's, in its label, it's going to be a library, but what it amounts to is that the building, the residence is going to be extended to the north. The first floor of the residence is going to be extended to the north about 16 feet, and then there'll be a patio that extends beyond that. So, and it's just, as stated there, it's for a library. There's a second story, and when we go through the plans, there's a second story, it basically remains unchanged as to the location of the second story. The only thing that's being changed on the second story is, I believe, there's a, there's a porch or, or a deck that extends out, yeah, let's see, if you go another, you know, yeah, another one, Jim, or let's see. Back up, maybe? Yeah, right there, you can see, oh, you see, yeah, there, on the second story, there's actually, and it's labeled, there's a, there's a deck, and the only thing they're doing is for, it's just, it's all glass, it'll be a new balcony with a, you know, frameless glass 42-inch enclosure there. So, the second story basically, just a small addition to the, to the first story. And I think that's, and if, Jim, if you could back up another drawing, another page from that, yeah, right there, you can also see on this, on the east side, they have just a, there's a circular wall that's, that's going to shield the existing air conditioning equipment, condensers that are there, and it's going to be a stone-faced wall. And so those, that's a summary of the additions on the north end of the building. Jim, if you could flip to the other drawings for the canopy? And so this is going to be the new canopy for the entrance. And, yeah, so, so you can see it's, here you can see the outline of the revised driveway, and then the extension of the walkway and canopy, that's, that's just, that's going to be added for the main entrance into the, into the residence. I think as you go through the pages, Jim, the architect provides some more detail, there's a, an elevation view of what's going to be, you know, the view as you're entering, as you're heading from east to west, looking at the residence. And then some more detail with regard to the specific construction for the canopy, and I think the next drawing shows even some more detail, right? This is just kind of a split view of it, you know, a framing plan on the right-hand side, and then a top view of the roof on the left-hand side. And then just some foundation details related to the construction. So, I think that summarizes what this current proposal is.
Questions for Mark?
Mark, I had, this is Jim, I just had one quick comment, I think everything was pretty straightforward, but I did notice on, I don't know if you can see my, I think you can see the cursor, there's a label says proposed stone curb here, and then this one said existing stone curb. I just think there was a, I don't know if there was a mislabel here.
It is, yeah.
Minor, minor clarification, but it took me a second to figure out which driveway was kind of which, so if you can just.
Yeah, I'll clean that up, I apologize. Oh, yeah, Jim, and one other thing, I caught it tonight when I was reviewing, is the setback on the new addition to the north property line is to the existing building, and so it's actually 16 feet less than what it is, but we still made setback.
Yeah, you're still wrong.
Yeah, I'm walking out of the office and I go, oh my gosh, I never checked the setback. And then I, then I saw that, that setback distance is to the existing structure, so I will send, I will send a revised plan that shows it's 16 feet less than what's shown, but it's still, the minimum required side yard setback in this zone is 150 feet.
Right, you're more than enough room, so you're fine there.
Yeah, so I'll make those two changes, Jim.
Yeah, just a minor label thing, just took me a second, so I figured that'll.
Okay, yeah, I apologize.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a resolution. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application by Pink Rose Properties LLC for site plan review and special use permit, respectively for an addition and main entrance canopy at 40 Morton Road within the HB20 Historic Preservation Zoning District. Planning Board accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. And we're classified and propose action as type 2 under seeker. We're scheduling a public hearing on the application for September 8th at 6:40 time, and direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. And who would like to be the site visitors?
I'll go.
I'll go.
Edna and?
Delise.
You're going to be busy.
I, I'm already busy, but let's go.
Thank you, Delise. Edna and Delise will do the site visit. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, referring the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And in accordance with Town Code Chapter 118 Waterfront Consistency Review, we refer the application to the Waterfront Consistency Review Advisory Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP, and we're authorizing without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing and may arise based on both the above-sighted field visit and referral preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on September 8th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I'd say yes.
Second, Melody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, Edna and Delise will get in touch with you about the site visit.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, that's all I had for tonight. Did anyone else have anything else they wanted to share with the planning board this evening? Who wants to go get dinner? Okay, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Enjoy your dinner.